I'm Jonathan Starr.
And I'm Kyler Callum.
And this is My Not Talk.
Sorry, that was fun.
Welcome to My Not Talk every Tuesday and Thursday at nine AM.
We're gonna do that again, but I won't laugh.
Whatever. Can't trust this guy. Hey Kyler, you're in a good mood today.
I am. I'm feeling good.
The ghost, the sour ghost.
You're gosh darn tootin'.
Yeah, I'm not actually, but.
What are we talking about today, Jonathan?
If you have questions or if you want to be involved, you can of course comment, but you can always follow up and email us at info@mydecoding.com or reach out to us on Facebook. We get through your stuff eventually. Uh, we got some leads that have been sent in that we're looking into. It's been interesting.
It has been. Jonathan's been a busy guy this week.
All been busy.
We have. Had a busy day at work yesterday. Had seven clients. It was gross.
Yeah, sounds like it. Anyways.
News.
We got some stuff on the.
Some topics on our list.
Sixteenth Street.
It's open. Woo. If we had the applause button, we'd be smashing that.
We can probably find something.
But 16th Street open again and also the Third Street Bridge. Couple. Oh my, there we go.
Is that good enough?
I think that's perfect. Third Street Bridge also opened up again. So we got. Hey, there we go. Yeah. Love to see that. Definitely helps Minot's thorough fairs around town. Helps.
Broadway's gotta be open here soon, right?
Yeah. Not too much longer at this point.
I mean, it is open, I guess, but.
Yeah, the full four lanes of Broadway and the exits and the entrances will all be back up pretty soon, which is gonna be great just in time for winter.
Yes, that's what it's a sign of. When orange cones go away, white snow comes out.
Comes to stay.
Comes to stay. Hey, I like it. I like it.
Got a lot we're gonna be talking about today. A lot of, a lot of headlines from around the state around Minot in the last couple of days. We're gonna go over.
Yes.
Got a preview of next week's city council meeting here in Minot.
That's really cool about them getting the agendas out a week early.
Yes, we can preview this because normally they came out Thursday afternoon. That was after the show, but now we can preview it on Thursdays.
Big stuff on that.
Yep, there is. There's some. Yeah, a lot of liquor. The liquor ordinances are gonna be up for discussion again. And now with a full seven person council, after like eight months of back and forth on this, we're finally gonna have something come to a head.
I believe it just says discussion. Doesn't necessarily say that there will be recommendations and voting on said recommendations, I believe. So we'll confirm that, but that will definitely be something that you wanna stay tuned for and check out on Monday if you have any opinions on that.
I'll be there on Monday. I'll finally be back to the city council.
Yeah, how, how is that gonna make you feel, buddy?
Excited. I haven't been there in like a month and a half. It's gonna be fun.
It's gonna be funny.
I haven't been there since before Mike Hayes got appointed, so it's, it's gonna be interesting. I enjoy going to them.
Yeah, that's good. Football season's over. We talked a little bit about that.
After tomorrow, it is done, done for us and that'll be all she wrote.
That's good. Heck yeah, man. Glad you made it to the end.
I didn't, I didn't die. It's a win.
Yep, sometimes we gotta look at the small things in life.
Exactly. So where do you wanna start today?
Wherever you wanna lead us.
All right, let's, let's start with some, some headlines from around. Obviously, we already talked about the 16th Street, Third Street being opening. Another cool one that's popped up that we've been talking about a little bit on the show on and off, the North, uh, the Union Silo has finally officially been completed.
Yes, that was, that was pretty cool.
Leo Van Heltton is all done with that.
Funding to finish things up, but yes.
Yeah, the painting itself is, is ready to go and there is still some fundraising goals that they have to meet still. So if you do end up wanting to donate to that, make sure you check out the Union Silo's website. You can definitely find it through that. But however, the project is done. So if you haven't checked it out in a few weeks, make sure you drive by, give it a good sight. You can see it great from Third Street Bridge now that it's open again. Uh, love to see that.
Good morning, Miranda. Congrats on a completed budget.
Yes, congratulations to the Ward County.
Yeah, and to all the.
To everyone around the state. Yes, that's, they had to deal with that this year because man, that was, it's never easy, but it was a whole different kind of mess this year.
It was, but it's interesting, and this is detracting from the headlines you were going through. Um, so we'll talk about it later as well, but it's interesting with Senator Hoag. And I know this is enough, enough for some people, but not opposed to the whole, uh, capping.
Of the state budget too.
Yeah, that might be a step in the right direction. Might be the beginning of going down a road that might lead to good things. Also wasn't opposed to, supporting more regional things. Um, we specifically asked about for the Ward County, the detention center about whether that was still ran by the county and there was just more funding that was given to the state or however that would work and it was not something that's out of the question with the caps.
That's awesome. Yeah, you guys had a great conversation. Podcasts up on YouTube.
Sure, not everyone enjoyed it, but you know what? I thought it was a good one.
I thought it was a good interview. I thought you guys did. I thought you did a fantastic job and I thought Senator Hoag was very open. I thought he did. I thought it was a good interview.
Yep, yep. Back to the headlines.
Speaking of state and issuing things, the North Dakota Department of Commerce issued out over $15 million in grants and awards over 23 different projects in the state yesterday.
Busy day for them.
It was, yep.
Government shutdown hadn't, has no effect on.
State government's still rocking. We got, we got that funded. But this one specifically, so 15 million all across the state. A lot of this is going towards different, uh, parks, facilities, things like that. Here in Minot, the local twist, the Scandinavian Heritage Park got $250,000 from the program. They're gonna, you know, it's gonna help with upgrades and keep the park in a main, to keep the park maintaining its role as a key tourism draw, celebrating the state's Nordic roots, according to the information from Commerce.
Nice. Four million dollars for the North Dakota Country Fest.
Yeah. Hey, that thing's getting, I, I, four million is interesting, but that thing's getting big. Like I'll.
Looks like it.
Yeah, it's going to now. You can imagine the talent and acts they can get now.
Yeah.
Which this act, okay, so there's two sides to this. We're diving into this one real, real fast now. Congratulations, you caught me on it.
Okay.
Two sides. One, we have an upcoming and emerging country fest here in the state that's been growing fairly substantially over the last five, six years. And it's been cool to see. People have come from all over the state. The campings, the sites have grown larger and larger and I, I think that's awesome. And now you're gonna have an influx of $4 million into that event where you can possibly identify and recruit some really high-end talent in. Like you can get some good artists to come to that show for that kind of money.
Luke Bryan, throw stuff at him.
Yeah. No, it'd be nice. But on the flip side of that, you see the money coming from the Commerce Department and they have had their fair share of.
Kyler's favorite subject.
Questionable issuances of money over the years to, I, I think that's a fair way to put allegedly, what are alleged questionable misuses of money. And I think this is just interesting to see that $15 million getting spread around the state in this sense and you know, on the surface, it's a good thing, but you look a little further and it always.
Well, there's always questions, but to be fair, this is probably not the most questionable $15 million dollars spent by Commerce at all.
Not even close. And in theory, this one has a lot of a more traceable.
Very traceable. Maybe there could be better, I, and wait, I don't know what the documentation has to be provided by the people that are receiving the money. But if there's a positive that we're looking for in this, it's the fact that these go to support a lot of the North Dakota things.
Yep.
So I, some would be like, we don't wanna spend our money on that and I hear you on that, but if $15 million was gonna get spent on North Dakota things, probably not the worst things.
No, cuz you have, uh, what, $462,000 going to the Badlands Gateway Trails, Gateway Trails in Madora, which is gonna build a new 8.1 mile trail system. It's going to actually connect downtown Madora to the surrounding Badlands. So you'll get year-round access for hikers, apparently to some extent at least, that starts directly in Madora. So a couple of really cool things there.
Listen to these things. Three million to restore the historic urban, urbane coat round barn near Dunsey and use the surrounding farmstead to create a dairy museum. And then 1.2 million for Jurassic Junction near Headingard.
Just gonna read that one.
To turn a bowling alley into a dinosaur-themed destination.
Okay, we might have to follow that one. Might, might have to pay attention to that one.
Destination.
A dinosaur-themed destination in Headingard, North Dakota.
And the department said it received 106 grant applications from 45 communities. One million for the Berry Creek Events and Culture Center near Fargo area, though expand a winery into a year-round venue. The winery will outlawding, an outdoor stage, pickleball courts, trails, a greenhouse, a wood-fired pizza oven, a marketplace, and a seasonal cider and beer garden. I'm just realizing that it's called a wood-fired pizza oven instead of wood fire.
One other interesting one here. Um, up by Langdon, uh, the Up North cabins are getting $97,000 to add a permanent structure to support growing demand for unplugged rural getaways near the scenic Pembina Gorge.
Oh yes, the scenic Pembina. I have not been there.
It's, it's really cool.
Oh, I bet it is.
It's really cool. I would recommend. We should go up there, film a video, vlog it. Cuz we've.
We could do a day in the life.
Yeah, yeah. Day in the life of the Decodian. But that's, that's one little neat thing that I saw. I thought we got to hammer on a little bit there. Some really cool projects, a couple of ones that are a little interesting that, oh, might have to keep an eye on that one.
Yeah. See, see. I just love the dairy museum and the, uh, dinosaur-themed destination.
Couple of those are, I mean, I don't know. It'd be cool.
Dude, it was open to everybody, like by all intents and purposes, it was all.
No, I'm not saying that any, any issue with the application process, it's just see how they play out.
Yeah, had a lot of applications too.
Watching, yeah, there was 150 some.
Yeah, 106 grant applications.
Or 106, okay. And.
Forty-five communities.
It'll be an interesting thing to follow because following this, you'll in theory be able to see some really neat things come to fruition.
Yep.
And if not, we'll go from there.
All right.
Next one up on my list, uh, we'll come back here to Minot a little bit closer. Had a nasty car accident last night in Southwest Minot. Yeah, sound like a motorcycle accident. Unfortunately, it was, don't know specifically when the rain was happening, but it was a wet night last night. Don't know if this took place maybe a little before that, but still it was kind of a damp, dreary day and unfortunately it looks like, uh.
Speaking of reported, someone did.
Yeah, the motorcyclist was passed, pronounced dead at the hospital, it looks like, and the 16-year-old, unfortunately, that was driving the SUVs in critical condition. So not a great situation there, unfortunately.
Not at all. Stay safe out there.
Yes, drive safe, watch where you're going, be careful. And another local Minot one that I got that came popping, I think it was yesterday, I saw it popping up around online, business for the future. It's going through an internal investigation.
Heard about this.
Yeah, so a lot, a lot of people wanting to, we were posting about this one yesterday. And as, as far as I can tell, all that they've really confirmed is that they are going through an internal investigation into a potential misuse of club assets.
Yep. Uh, inquiries being conducted in cooperation with the Minot Police Department to determine the validity and extent of the allegations. At this note, at this time, no names or additional details will be released as the investigation remains ongoing. The board is committed to maintaining transparency, accountability, and integrity of our organization throughout this process. So, yeah, I, and there's no more information on that.
Yep. One thing I did see was shared was apparently someone had to clarify that this is not related or linked to the Bowman, uh, the Service Valley Bowman situation that happened a few months ago.
Was, that makes sense.
Yep, which I, yeah, but someone I saw that was shared, so it felt like we had to, had to specify that one. Cuz that, also quick by step onto that one, the Bowman Club, I'm surprised nothing ever came of that further.
Yeah, well, I think, I think the club just wanted to move on.
Which, yeah, I completely understand on the club's angle. Like, don't blame them whatsoever. Get over and get through it.
You're saying like the prosecutor sometime with the state level or.
I figured they would have tried to have stepped in a little bit with everything that happened earlier in the year, but, which that feels like a lifetime ago now, back in March, but. Another interesting one, I got a bunch for you, Jonathan. I came ready today. Yeah, another interesting one.
I got one or two.
Good. You're local to Minot. This was some stuff that we've been hearing some rumblings about for a few, probably a couple of months now at this point. And finally came out into the open last week at the Chamber of, uh, not the Chamber of, but the, yeah, the economic development. Yes, I got, do you wanna drop this one?
Go ahead.
All right, so a company called North American Iron.
So to be fair, we have that you don't even know about yet. You haven't seen, or I'm saying our viewers.
Oh, you.
Is, um, an interview with the mayor of Minot, Mark Dancer. Uh, we recorded that on Tuesday. It's gonna come out either today or tomorrow. And, um, he talked a little bit about the impact of this. Sounds very, very big.
Very exciting. Company called North American Iron is going to be coming to North Dakota and opening up a plant here near Minot. And it's gonna be right outside of town. It's going to, what, open up over 100 jobs at least to start, it sounds like. And it sounds like it's gonna, could likely be a lot more than that.
Could create 650 jobs in North Dakota, um, help shift the US steel industry away from reliance on imports from Russia and Brazil. Uh, 730 acres, $2 billion, first of its kind in the United States. And so, oh, I think the anticipated opening date would be end of this decade, 2029 or so.
And one quote they had here that's in the Minot Daily, uh, will be the first and only merchant pig iron producer in the United States and pig iron, of course, is used to then create steel. It's a much-needed product that we're after here, that we're producing for the US, for national security and for our communities.
When you go and you, so in the interview that we have with Mayor, um, basically, it sounds like, and there's a, if they did this, they, they get the remains of some of the other mining that has gone on, basically. Um, and so if there's enough leftovers that they're able to get, that would, uh, keep this going for decades, he said.
Yep. Yeah, they, they're able to use all the tailings from the mines out in Minnesota. Then you're able to process them through, get the pig iron out and then you're able to use that to make steel. And this is, this, this could be a massive thing for not just Minot, for the region too at this point.
A really important thing. Let's dwell on this topic for a minute here. Yeah.
Yeah.
Because one of the interesting things that we, I begin to ask questions about and I think it's an interesting thing is looking at the emerging industries that North Dakota is focusing on. I don't know all the industries in North Dakota. Okay, obviously we're ag.
There's a lot.
Country, right? Um, you had the coal mining that happened. That was a huge deal for a long time. And then you had the off and on oil industry that then began to really boom in the last 20 years. So you had these industries and then you've seen them in the last few years. There's been this huge investment into data centers.
Yep.
And, uh, Bitcoin mining or crypto mining. And that's been an interesting one because that hasn't had rate reviews. Those are very resource-heavy industries to be in.
Yep. They take up a lot of energy.
They take up a lot of energy and some people say, look at the amount of energy it takes compared to the amount of jobs it creates. Because if it doesn't, if it takes a lot of energy, but isn't creating enough jobs, is it something that we want?
That's a fair point because generally speaking, these plants and, or those data centers don't create a ton of jobs.
No, they don't.
It's a minimal thing, whereas people pretty much just providing minimal maintenance on the machines after everything's set up and running.
Right. So now in recent history, you have has that got bought out by Chevron and then there's a layoff of over 100 jobs.
I, I heard possibility of more coming too from Chevron across the country, not just here, but that's a.
Figure out their merger and stuff. So that's a hit for the oil industry in North Dakota. Huge hit. Okay, so now let's get to it. Now you've gone, you're able to bring in a new emerging industry that actually fits the bill of what North Dakota is. We're a hard-working group. That's who we are. Um, some might say we're not specifically you and I, but, but.
When referencing us.
As a state, we are.
We're not talking about the Decodian. We're talking about North Dakodans.
Right. And so I, it's like one of those industries that is a perfect fit for North Dakota, create 650, potentially create 650 jobs over an extended period of time. In my opinion, this is huge. This is a win and kudos to anybody and everybody that was able to be involved in the process to make it happen in Minot.
And one interesting thing that's gonna come along with it as well is the sheer amount of rail traffic that will have to be, be designed for it because all of these tailings and everything has to be shipped in and over from Minnesota.
Right.
So you're, obviously a lot of those links are probably already established, but you're gonna be seeing a lot more traffic coming to the area at that point too.
Yep, which will also be radically good.
Yep.
It'll be interesting to see how Minot grows with that. 650 jobs. Think about that.
Yep.
No, think about that format. Let's dwell on that. What does that mean?
It's a lot.
It's a lot and that means housing.
Yes.
And that is a struggle point.
And on the flip side of that, this is gonna coincide with the Sentinel Missile Project coming as well.
Which needs housing.
Yes.
And there's more funding that the, that just got announced for that stuff. So it sounds like that's gonna move forward.
Those are gonna be on very similar timelines. So in the next five, six years here, you're gonna start seeing a lot more stuff popping up here into Minot. You're gonna have Sentinel and the militaries popping up probably closer to North Hill doing all of what they're gonna be doing. Then I think this is, I, it's in the industrial side of town, so it's gotta be the east side, I assume. And plus that works for the railroad and everything out there too. You have Gavitt Yard and everything that would work, I think. But, um, aside from that. Yes, this is gonna be a great opportunity for a lot of people in the area. I mean, hey, if this doesn't work out in a few years, we can go work in the iron plant.
Yeah. About that. Uh, Jeff says, huge win for Minot. We will need so many new homes. We should start developing land ahead of this. I firmly believe that. I believe that, you know what? The future's looking really bright for the Minot area. We've gotta figure out the, uh, home development process, the land development process, which turns into home developments.
Yeah, because this is, this is, it's a multi-billion dollar project and that, obviously that includes the plant itself, but that includes also a lot of outlying and underlying things around it. Well, it's gonna include development. It's gonna include new.
Chick-fil-A's, but it will include, if it, if it starts in 2029, there's still gonna be a huge amount of development that's gonna have to be put in place to create a $2 billion.
Facility. Yes. You're gonna have to rework roads, rework all kinds of different, uh, utility lines and everything going.
That stuff is gonna create jobs and pull people to Minot.
Yep. So there we go. It's gonna be fun next five years here in town, folks.
One thing that's really cool about today.
It's Thursday.
Yep. Well said. Just drop it there. So we're working on, uh, getting an interview set up with Jim Bugalas.
Yeah, that would be, who is?
The CEO.
The CEO and I believe founder of North American Iron.
Yes, so we'll hopefully have more information on this with them. Um, so exciting stuff for sure coming out of Minot. Kudos to everyone involved in that.
It's gonna be a fun, fun project. It's finally fun to see it come to light and hear people be able to talk about it instead of it just kinda being an underlying thing.
Yeah, exactly. I'll say this. If this is economic development, what a controversial topic.
This is the best version of it.
If this is economic development, good job.
Yeah.
Good job to those that involves in.
This is the best version of it. Yes, I love to see this coming.
Does. Yeah. Someone just, uh, Alderman. Olsen stole my thought. Maybe we just had the same one. Maybe economic development is a good thing. Exactly.
It's perfect. No, uh, you have, did you say, do you wanna, do you have any final thoughts on this one? Cuz I think this great move. Can't wait to see it start developing.
So many thoughts that don't need to be dropped right now and they're all good.
Look forward to that. I have another one here in Minot though for you before I, I throw it over to you for whatever stories you have. There, uh, last summer at the state fair, there was unfortunately a nasty domestic incident where a lady got assaulted and there's been some issues with that trial back and forth and there was a pre-trial resolution that was offered to the judge. The judge has rejected it and it sounds like it's going to be going to trial next year. Where she suffered a broken nose and some facial lacerations and things. So that, in another similar court trial to what we've been, uh, talking about and other things, this one is actually, excuse me, the three-day trial is scheduled for October 29th. So expect to see that start to coming to light.
Very good, very good. All right, well, we're gonna go to a quick break and then we'll talk about what I got.
All right, I'm ready.
In the demanding world of oil and gas, precision, safety, and efficiency are non-negotiable. Unmanned operator drone services revolutionizes how you monitor, inspect, and manage your operations. With cutting-edge technology and expert operators, we deliver real-time data, detailed reports, and actionable insights for our valuable clients. Why risk the safety of your team or waste precious time? Our drones access even the most challenging areas with ease, reducing downtime and enhancing safety across your sites. We take the guesswork out of your projects by offering LiDAR mapping and inspection services so that your projects stay safe, on budget, and on time. Unmanned Operator Drone Services, where technology meets safety, precision, and efficiency. Contact us today to elevate your operations. Yes, unintended.
Enjoy Minot's finest authentic Mexican cuisine with a view at Mi Mexico. The rooftop patio is open and ready for you to enjoy a margarita or other cool refreshment along with genuine mouth-watering Mexican entrees. Mi Mexico, South Broadway.
If you wanna make it out to that outdoor patio, you better get out there quick before the season's over, which it could already be frankly.
I heard there's a day that's gonna be 60 degrees left. Still got one of those in the gun?
Still there. It ain't over yet.
Never know what will happen.
Never. Who knows what the weather will do? We live in North Dakota. Just wait a couple of hours, it'll change.
The truth.
So what you got for me, Starman?
Well.
I'm ready.
There's a.
Hit me with the news.
Yeah, hit you with the news. Uh, there's been some, a lot of talk that's been going on around the, uh, rise in health insurance.
Yeah.
And so this is something that has been being picked up, or not being picked up, but as, uh, the commissioner, John Godfrey, is, uh, spending a lot of time actually advocating about. According to the North Dakota Monitor, premiums may rise between $378 and $3,735 in 2026 depending on a person's income level. According to Kaiser Family Foundation, data cited by the Insurance and Securities Department. In some cases, it could be double, triple, or even quadruple, which you paid last year, said Godfrey.
It's a lot.
No, that's a lot. Yeah. Yeah, that's like a lot, a lot. It's like a lot, 2X. He expects the sharply increasing premiums to affect approximately 30,000 North Dakodans. And as many as 10,000 may choose to go uninsured based on third-party analysis Godfrey has reviewed. I don't know, man. This sounds like, I, I don't know what, what the federal government will choose to do and if they, how much they need to step in that we don't normally mess with federal stuff too much on our podcast.
But obviously with them having been shut down for what's going on a couple of weeks at this point, it's starting to, you know.
We reached out for an inquiry, but it's all shut down. Just, just kidding. We didn't actually reach out. But, um, it's definitely something that is really concerning and I, I don't know. What was interesting though, I think the reason why it stands out to me a little bit is we saw the budget process go down and a lot of the municipalities were saying, insurance though. You want a 3% camp, but what about insurance? And now you go and you see that it's gonna affect every North Dakodian.
Yeah, yeah. You, one, like you mentioned, that's a great point. Throughout this whole budget process we've seen this fall, one of the most consistent things across the board we've seen mentioned is the rising prices of insurance premiums. And that's for, you know, all across the government board and state employees, city employees, whatever it might be, who get pretty, get decent packages. And now you're seeing this likely get spread to the public as well. And it's, it's something that I suppose was probably remotely foreseen with the rising costs of premiums across the board. So I guess it's not overly shocking, but now that the government's shut down, it just adds another spoke or, uh, you know, nail in the tire at that point.
Right. State government can't do much to help is basically what's being said. The enhanced tax credits are a federal program. Godfrey said eligibility for the credits was expanded during the COVID-19 pandemic, made it possible for a lot of people to gain access to health insurance. He said during that expansion, we saw a number of farmers, ranchers, small business owners be able to qualify for a subsidy and then also able to access health insurance, which we think is a very good thing. And of course, we are aware of the government shutdown, which there's a continuing resolution that is on the table that is not being signed on by one of the parties. That is not being signed on by one of the parties. But part of that continuing resolution is not the tax, the COVID era tax credits. And so that's what's creating a lot of this conversation and we may see effect in the pocketbooks when it comes to insurance. Question is, I think is this, because you can get into the whole conversation of the COVID era tax credits or sorry, COVID era credits for insurance.
Yeah.
But I think the bigger question is just insurance in general, because obviously I think I'd be in the boat where we don't need to extend COVID era credits, but do we need to look at a better process or credits or?
Is it time to reassess the situation and try to find a different way forward with it at this stage?
Typically I'd be pretty conservative when it comes to stuff like that. So I'm not sure how much of a role the government needs to play in, but insurance costs are skyrocketing.
Yeah.
Hospital costs, medical costs are skyrocketing.
Yep.
And it's part of the day and age that we live in.
Yeah, it's been something, I mean, as long as I've been alive, I've heard about, you know, conversations over Medicare, Medicare premiums, insurance costs. I look back all the way to the two thousand presidential election when you had Bush and Gore going against each other. One of the biggest things they talked about was insurance. And like, one of the big things from the SNL skits back in the day was Gore talking about the lockbox of Medicare. Going to have a lockbox and you fast forward twenty-five years at this point, and this is still one of the major things that we've had that we have going on in the country.
Right.
You've, we've gone through a twenty-year war in that period and you still have this as one of the pressing issues. You've had universal healthcare or a version of universal healthcare get passed fifteen years ago at this point, and we're still suffering through what's now become worse insurance levels in the country, whether it be levels of care, cost of it, or just medical costs in general. It's just continuing to skyrocket. And I think we're coming to a point where we have to reassess the situation.
And so what does that look like? I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not.
That's why I don't get paid.
So that's where we got to ask Senators Hovind and Kramer and Representative Fedorcheck.
I think more Representative Fedorcheck, yeah.
On the future of this, but have to see if we can get an interview with them.
Also, I mean, it's not impossible.
No, it's not.
You laughed at it because I changed topics, but it's not, they, we have had interviews with every single one of those.
Yeah.
Actually, we haven't done Hovind.
I was gonna say, okay, fair.
I haven't reached out either. North Dakota lawmakers build wish lists for the five hundred million dollar federal grant, rural healthcare grant, too. That's an incredible deal, too.
It's a lot, yeah.
Yeah.
That's something that could affect us up here in Minot for sure, or at least in the region here, maybe not Minot directly, but you could see areas in the region being affected by that. Places possibly getting some more support, maybe like a garrison kind of area, something along those lines.
Right. Could, definitely affect here. So definitely some interesting things trickling down from the federal side as well. All right, Monday, we got a city council meeting.
Before we do, I have one thing that I thought of that I meant to mention on Tuesday. And I forgot and I'm not going to get too express with it. If you know, you know, if you don't, go find out. So on, I was on Instagram, I think over this past weekend or Monday, I was scrolling, you know, mindless numbed scrolling. And I came across the Fargo Police Department on Instagram. And it was, you know, a generic video, but it had like hundreds and hundreds of comments. And I'm like, what? What's the deal with this? So I start looking and everybody's asking about this one specific officer and where, where, where they're at. And so I look back and it's like a recurring theme and it's, I encourage you to go look into the lore of the Fargo PD on Instagram to anyone out there watching. It's, it made me laugh.
What a.
It's super random and weird.
Yeah, what a blurb.
It made me, it made me giggle. I won't lie.
All right. Fargo PD getting the shout out from Kyler.
Yes. So city council coming up on Monday. Going to be a big meeting. There's a lot going on the agenda.
There's actually earlier that day before council.
There's a swearing in ceremony.
Swearing in ceremony for the Minot PD. Get more officers. Getting closer to full force.
Always love to see it.
All right. So one of the big deals is going to be the alcohol ordinance.
Yes, that is one of the bigger things.
Liquor license cap discussion. And the recommendation is have city council review and consider the city's cap on liquor licenses and advise, advise staff on how to proceed. So there won't actually be, well, I guess you never know what can happen, but it doesn't appear to be anything that will happen on the liquor license cap. That being said, the item for it, there will be a comprehensive update. And there is a chance that something would more, would happen on that. The recommendation on that is city council to review and consider the attached draft and provide feedback and direction. So there's a chance that they want to approve it, that there would be more feedback that'd be given, but there, there is a chance that someone can make a motion to have that one go forward. What do you see coming out of this, Kyler?
I bet they approve the comprehensive updates. They'll probably.
Pretty close.
Yeah, they might, you know, make some touch-ups here and there, some minutia of wordsmithing, but.
I don't think people are as concerned about that, Kyler.
No, they're, they're, they're concerned about the liquor license cap.
What do we think is going to happen on the cap, Kyler?
You know, did you, I don't remember. Did you ask Alderman Hayes about that when he did his interview? But I think that's where the question lies, is where he's going to side on that.
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
I think he's, no, there's been discussion all over council on this one.
There has. And people, that's, this is true. This item doesn't fall along the lines that we've generally seen them fall on.
Yeah.
This, this one's going to take a little bit different level to it. And I, I think it's going to be interesting to see where it comes because again, as we've discussed, going back to this spring when we had Tony Mueller from Sports on Tap on talking about it. This, this is something that you're fighting the free market on one end of it, where you want this to be free and open, free enterprise kind of situation. But on the flip side, you're fighting a decades and decades-long ordinance that is now, you can argue artificially inflated the cost of obtaining a liquor license to the point where it's become an asset to these people. And it's a really fine line to try to walk down and balance on, do you want to just open this up? And allow free market? And if you do, which, you know, it's a fair argument, but now these people that have been doing this for years and have been playing by the rules that they've been forced to play on for however long, they're sitting here stuck in the mud. Do they get compensation for the cap that they had to pay for that is now negated at this point? And I think that's where so much of the discussion has come from at this stage. Because you, you look back at the meetings where this has been on the agenda before, and I bet we'll see here there on Monday, there's what, fifteen or sixteen bars around town that have come together and, you know, gotten legal representation.
Yeah, right.
And.
So where, where do you stand on it?
Me personally?
Yeah.
My thoughts on it, I, I would like, so A, I don't like that we'd have to pay them out. So I, I don't want there to be like a two, three million dollar drop on this. So I am on a gray middle ground that I don't think is even really discussed at this stage. I, I would personally prefer to see the raising of the cap so that there is always like.
Changing the ratio.
Yes, change that rate, because right now it's like one license per fifteen hundred people or twenty-five hundred, don't quote me, I don't remember the number off the top of my head. Yeah. But you, you have, I would, I would like to see that ratio enlarged so you can see more licenses come into the picture. So that way in theory, you're always going to have like one or two available.
Change the ratio, allowing more licenses.
And that way you don't have to pay people out and you're still able to keep the area as it is. And maybe you're able to lower that entrance fee with those license caps as well.
What do you say to the argument when it's said that there are available licenses?
I think there is right now, isn't there?
Maybe a literal one available, but I'm talking about the, the argument is that if a company is for sale, then the license is available. What do you say to that?
Like.
Business is for sale.
The.
Cause I think at one point, the O was for sale, right?
Yep.
And so the license is technically available because you could go buy the O.
Yeah.
But then you're, at that point, you're stuck into their business model a little bit. I mean, you can revamp a little bit, but also you got to make money.
Yeah.
More money right out of the gate.
Buying that license on top of the business and the facility itself.
Right.
Like you said, you're locking into that model to a degree at that stage. So I, I like the ability to sell it separately. That way, you know, if you lock.
So but my question is, do you consider that an available license?
Again, I would say, yeah, in theory at least. I, maybe it's, again, you can argue that the price is.
So then why do we need to increase the cap then?
I, I would like to always see an available option. Cause there's going to be times where there's not a business for sale and there's not a cap of license available.
So then every single time that you hit the cap, you're going to go and change the ratio again?
And I don't want to say that in theory, because I feel.
Other statement can't be true.
I would rather see, and yes, I still want to change the ratio, but almost make it a concurrent moving target kind of thing where as you do continue to process along, you can see it elevated. But also if you get too many up there, you can see it reduced. So if you end up having.
So you're basically.
I, I want it to be.
Wait, this is the way I understand it. Okay. You may not like this and we're.
That's fine. Yes, this is, this is happening.
Not talk about this beforehand. Okay. Basically what you're saying is let's keep the cap so we don't have to pay anybody out. But let's make it where anybody can have one.
Make it adjust to a degree, I guess. That's where I'm at.
So you're basically going and making it free market, but still keeping a cap in there. So that way you don't have to pay anybody out.
Effectively, I guess that's where I'm at on it. Maybe that's not the best place to be at on it. People won't like, no, I'm going to get that.
People won't like either of us with our views on this.
That's not like, that's not really, my viewpoint isn't really a view that's been discussed.
Well, I, because I, I think it's too close to free market.
And you're probably right with that.
I think more or less if you went to the point of, let's every five years. And they already look at, they already reassess it like every few years.
Yep.
I don't know that there's a set and set schedule, but they already reassess it every few years.
Yeah. It's consistently looked at. I don't know what.
So, I don't know. I don't know. I really like free market. I'll say that. I really like free market. I also, and I've said this all the time, I also feel like it's an industry that should be monitored a little bit differently, whether people, people don't agree with that. But I, I, I do, I do view that. And so for that reason alone.
Substance, yeah.
I'm not opposed to the caps on it for that reason alone, but, but then the free market side of me gets riled up about that.
I get that. That's where I'm at to a degree with it, which is why I have some weird hybrid that probably doesn't actually fix anything.
I'm afraid. Yeah. No, I, I think it's interesting. It'll be good conversation for sure. I'm sure it'll be spirited, which, but this will be a good one. Like I'm looking forward to that conversation.
Yeah, I look forward to going back to the city council meetings.
Yeah.
Be my first one back.
There's also the sales tax ordinance amendment. That may be pretty cut and dry because it's already been talked about, but there could be a lot of discussion on that one, too.
Yep.
That could go either way.
Yep. Where they're adjusting that first penny and how it might be used in the future. There's another one that I thought was kind of interesting as well, and that was discussing on the Third Street Bridge repairs. Where there is some recommended actions to approve task order two, which I'd have to look at that and approve task order three to pretty much build the new bridge at some point or start the process of it. Task order two is a lot. That's, I don't know, that's fifteen pages. I'm not looking.
I believe it's to build the bridge.
It's not to build, no, it's not.
At first, it's just the engineering and all that.
It's to start the process of it.
Yeah.
Yep. It's, they're going to review the existing bridge reports and prioritize repairs. So try to figure out which order is best to get stuff done in.
Another interesting deal, we talked about this before, and that's the amendment to increase Civil Service Commission from three to five members.
Yes.
Clarify removal process. That will be a really good thing.
Yep, that is going to be a good one. We were at that Civil Service Commission meeting where they tried to, yeah, where they approved that themselves. And now it's going to go before council and from everything I've heard, discussion on this is something that they, that will be necessary and will be helpful for them.
There's a lot of opportunity to join committees right now because there's also, this will be a little more selective, but the last city council minute, it was meeting, it was teased about having a like development type.
Yep.
Committee, ad hoc committee.
Alderman Pittner was brought that up, I believe. Yep.
It'd be like eleven members. And of course, that's not final.
No, it's a fluid kind of thing.
And they'll figure it out, but that one to focus on how, how can we get better, more development in Minot? Stuff where we can keep builders busy.
Yep. Keep, keep people busy, keep people happy, make.
But not just busy, it's because like we talked about earlier, the North American Iron Project, we're going to need, we're going to need some houses.
Yes.
Project Sentinel, we're going to need some houses. And, and some of this stuff, it's not even that's, it could be where it's not a boom. Where it's just another industry that's added to the community for many, many years.
Yeah. And I, I think that's, in theory, that's how it's going to likely be. The Sentinel thing might be more of a boom.
Yep.
But I think the North American Iron is, should be something that's a steady, consistent stronghold in town for a long time.
Thing with the North American Iron is not only that, I feel like it could change the landscape of Minot dramatically in that it creates more industries around it.
Yeah, like it could turn Minot, it has, this has the potential to long-term down the line, change Minot into an industrial town.
Right.
Partially.
Yeah, but I'm not, I'm not even going there. I'm just saying there, you're going to have more, like when you look at more, you're six hundred and fifty more people, right? Or houses, employees, excuse me, not houses. Six hundred and fifty more employees. That's going to increase population of Minot. It's going to change a lot of things in that game, which could bring other industries.
Yep.
Other things that could expand. Maybe it turns into an industrial town. Maybe it just brings another industry. Where you have the ag, you have the industrial, you have oil, which is kind of that hybrid with industrial. Yeah, and it just continues to grow out.
The expansion.
When do you think Minot will hit seventy thousand people? Like that's something that could be in twenty fifty, right? Twenty sixty on the pace that we're going.
I would, I would, twenty fifty was the number that came to my mind.
Okay, but if you had a brand new industry that came to Minot. I mean, just that alone, if you went in, if every single one of these jobs, which would be almost a possibility. But if every single one of these jobs was filled by somebody out of town. Okay?
Yeah.
And there is an average household size, I think is three. Okay, so right there, you've increased it by two thousand people. That's just the employees. That's not any other factors going on.
Nothing exterior, none of the, because think about how many, how, how much logistics it'll take to get into this situation. The amount of, not just, obviously, we already talked about the rail aspect of it, but think about the amount of truck traffic that'll be going into a place like that. I assume at least, maybe not, but I feel like that'll be a place, another aspect of it, too.
So the whole point of that conversation is to say that is so important to make sure that Minot is ready on the development side where we can.
Yep.
Continue forward down that path. We talked about that with Mayor Janssour, too.
Yes, yeah, you did. You guys had a great conversation. That one's going to be coming out, what'd you say, today or tomorrow?
Today or tomorrow.
Perfect. So yeah, make sure you guys check that out, be on the lookout for that. Great interview.
Also had an interview with the new North Dakota Republican Party Chair, Matthew Simon.
Ooh.
That'll be coming out in the next few days. I don't know. And then we have the North American Iron CEO that we're.
Working on.
Working on.
Finalizing something with.
That goes as well as planned, then that could be in the next couple of days as well.
That would be fantastic. And we also have hopefully some talks, getting an interview with Chief Frye on the books here, too.
Will be good.
That'll be great. Something we've been working on for a while here. And I'm, I'm working on a little project, too. I, I got the, I know. I don't want to, I don't want to tease too much. I might, I might not, in case I don't follow through, but my plan.
Yours in the works.
I know. My, my plan is to get this done last week of October and hopefully it'll be out somewhere in November, early December.
Sounds exciting. I like that.
It is. It's very Minot centric.
Very Minot centric, just like Minot Talk was today. Appreciate everyone that tuned in. One thing, we're going to start Tuesday. Okay, you gotta be ready for this.
I'm ready.
Okay, we're going to start collecting pictures from around town and we're going to have the sights and sounds, probably no sounds, but at least sights of, of Minot. If there's a picture that you want to be shown, then just message that over to us and it, no guarantees, but it might, might would get displayed.
Might make it onto the show.
It can be something as simple as Third Street Bridge is now open again. Cause you know, that was, that was a rough summer.
It can be that turkey up here on North Hill.
It can be that turkey on North Hill. If it's doing, like Turkey's made a name for itself. I, I heard that it had to go bye-bye.
Oh, like you got hit?
No.
They came up and moved it.
Hell, but could be construction projects that are happening. There's a few of those that are starting to take off around town. Or it could just be, like you said, something just incredible.
Yep.
Northern lights.
You see the Union silos from a great angle.
Yep. The sun, sometimes it looks beautiful in North Dakota. A lot of times it does.
Get that nice sunset over downtown Minot.
First snowfall where it just piles up so wonderfully. It's like, I'm here for the next six months. Beautiful things, man. Beautiful things.
And on that note.
Everything North Dakota has to offer.
We are beautiful. I love North Dakota.
North Dakota is beautiful.
I don't love the snow.
Yep, it's one of those things. All right. Thank you for tuning in to Minot Talk today. Be sure to like and subscribe. Guess what, man? This is so exciting.
Okay, did we hit it? Oh, I thought you were going to hit me with that.
But that would have been at the beginning, but we are, we're ten subscribers away from a thousand.
So close. A year and a half in the works and we're almost there. So close. A year and a half in the works and we're almost there.
I don't know.
You've been doing this longer than I have, of course. This is a few years in the works for you.
That's one of those things though, that we've just been working on, waiting for it to happen. And now we're at the point where, it may happen here in the next week or two. And it's just one of those milestones. There's still a ton of growth to do. There's still a ton of things to do, but it's, big milestone on the journey and.
Yep.
Can't wait till that.
It'll feel good.
Feel good. So if you find in your heart and there's somebody that needs to know about the Dakota or Minotite.
Let them know.
Let them know.
Send them to our YouTube channel.
Let them hit that subscribe button. Help us hit that 1K mark.
We're almost there.
We're looking forward to it. Thanks for, uh, tuning in. Have a great rest of your day.